Pen is running out of ink.
I got a fountain again. Of being this building?
Well, I copy of a lot of everything.
Let's make sure you got it organized.
Yeah, that one, yeah, that one. Oh, good.
Nice to see you up and around.
Huh?
Nice to see you up and around.
I can tell you beats the alternative. I gave him a choice, too.
They didn't shave your face, they just shaved your head.
Get them started.
But Gordon, the surgeon promised that it would not change my good character.
That's unfortunate.
That's what Nancy said.
All right, it's four o'clock, we're gonna get the meeting started, please join me in the pledge. Pledge of leaders.
United States where it's a republic which stands one nation, united by individuals.
Thank you. So for those of you who might have come in a little bit late, please don't forget to sign in, because we know you were here. Before we get started with the meeting, I want to take a minute to introduce the town's new administrative assistant, and she will also serve as the deputy town clerk and deputy tax collector, Deputy Redness Rock.
Deputy Treasurer.
Shelly Neely, so welcome, Shelly. This is our first select board meeting with us. Do we have anything for the assessors? Next item on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes. We have two sets of minutes, one from the ninth of February, one from the fourteenth of February. Before I entertain a motion, does anybody have any adjustments to the minutes? I have a couple.
Did you want to rehearse?
Yeah. So Shelly and Eleanor, I know that you guys are working together right now. So on the minutes from the ninth of February, under the approval of meeting minutes, we have three separate motions and seconds. And those should each be separated out as individual motions and then showing the vote before you go to the second item and the third item and the vote. You follow my gist on that? Under public comments, Mr. Wolfert's name is misspelled. The correct spelling for Russ Wolfert's is W-O-L-F-E-R-T-Z. Where do you go? In the first line of the public comment toward the end of that sentence permitting coming before, please spell out the word planning board instead of plan board. And then under all business, excuse me, it talks about the review and approval of earned or paid leave policy in accordance with 26 MRS 637. Select Board discusses the policy. Item number five discussed and its alternatives. It says that the motion was made by Linda, but I'm sorry. Going down the wrong path here. On that particular item, it does say item five was discussed. The motion says that it was to accept the entire policy with the exception of item number five. That's not entirely so. We did include item number five. There were two item number fives, and we had to choose which of those two alternates. And if you'd please spell out in those minutes that item number five that was approved as part of the policy was that unused leave up to 40 hours will not be paid to the employee at time of separation. Is that clear or not? Do you have anything?
No, I only had the Russell's name.
Okay. All right, so with those corrections, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as collected.
Second.
The motion and the second, is there any discussion? Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom? Chair votes yes. On the minutes from the fourteenth of February, the only change that I have or correction is the, at the ten o' eight timeframe, the motion was made by Linda Post to enter into executive session. The minutes are not showing any second, and the second was by Tom Wong-Halter. That should show on that note. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I think when we came out in second session and the motion that I made, I think we need to strike the map and lot number because that reveals if someone's interested, who it was. It really shouldn't be in there because we can't name that person. I mean, the trio number is their account number, so I think we need to strike that map and lot number.
Would you agree with that, Tom?
Yeah, I brought up that during the time we did it, whether or not it was any emotional review on the lot.
All right, so please delete the reference to the map and lot number for that particular tax abatement. Any further discussion? We have a motion, please.
Yes, I'll make a motion that we set the minutes of the February fourteenth, 2022 special slight with me with the changes.
Tom?
Second.
Your motion and a second to approve the minutes corrected for the February fourteenth meeting. Tom, how do you vote?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Is there anybody that would like to make any public comments, either related to the agenda or not? Come on up, Linda.
Lynn Chaplin, 15 Ginpoint Road.
But if you'd like to, you can take the message.
Thank you. This is in reference to the solid waste. I attended the Zoom meeting a couple weeks ago, and apparently, from what I understood, there's a choice to be made whether or not to modify the plans and make it fit the budget or to expand the budget another, I think it was around $400,000. And my question to you, or might find out if there are any comments on this, is if there is another, if it's decided that they're going to go forward with the existing plans and the new revised costs, which are a lot more than what they started out being, is there going to be another vote for the townspeople to approve that because they're going to be paying for it? What we voted for before was the money that we were getting back, the refund, plus the other monies that they somehow budgeted at the solid waste. Not quite sure how that worked, but it wasn't going to be, as I recall, I don't remember there being a big bond or anything like that that we voted on. This would basically be raising our taxes. Is there going to be another vote on it, or is this just going to be because the solid waste doesn't need to consult us in order to borrow this extra money? They can just do that and force us to pay it without consulting us?
I think before we get into that, we are going to hear from the chair and the Secretary Treasurer of the Solid Waste Transfer Station Board of Directors. Hopefully, your answer will come from that, or at least you'll have an opportunity hearing.
Okay. It's in your ears.
Or remind me.
Yes, all right.
Any other public comments? Russ, please come forward.
Russ Wolfert, Owl's Head. In sort of full disclosure, I would like to say that I've had a conversation with the county commissioner and with Jeremy and one of the commissioners directly trying to resolve some of the planning board questions that are out there. I know that some of you selectmen have questioned me in the past as to how we might organize our meetings and how do we do our agendas. So I'd like to address it specifically to you as far as the upcoming month. Last month was somewhat of a shambles for a number of reasons. I can tell you that personally and collectively within our board, we do not wish to meet unless we have our code officer with us. We are laypeople, we're studying this as best we can, but we do need the professional assistance of our code office. In between, officer, in between, I had met with a fellow who has one of the properties that's impacted by this onerous FEMA entity that seemed to be after us. To resolve that, I spoke with him today, and I am organizing a pre-board meeting site plan inspection. I have not yet today had a chance, and I'm glad he's here, to reach out to Jeremy. I want to also include the airport in the site plan inspection, an event center. We have one other individual on a private property. I think since we're doing it, they all collectively should be involved together. They're all part of the party that lasted way too long, two months ago. Given the different pieces of information we have to do, it seemed prudent to me that we do that and then reconvene on the fourteenth and try to resolve these. So all four items, including some that Jeremy kindly noted may have been exempted from the language, but they're going to be included. Whoever's going on the airport, I'd like to get them all out on the agenda as best we can in an order that seems to make some good sense. Having said all that, we all, meaning the board itself, are all moving forward to resolve these matters, all five matters, FEMA included. The challenge that I'm having on a personal level is I am getting repeated phone calls, conversations, inquiries relative to a meeting you folks might remember maybe a year or two ago, where the townspeople at a meeting were promised that before any buildings were added to the airport in the runway section, that the town would have some input on it individually. I don't see that happening, I'm not sure how to address it. I think we have a complete application before us, and we as a board will have to deal with that. The other issue, Gordon, as you know, is I am still concerned, and many of us are concerned, about how we make a resource protection area evaporate. I'm not trying to say it's an accurate one or a correct one, but the fact that it's on record means somehow we have to find a good way to get rid of it. Personally, I have the same situation in Thomaston where an errant vote created a zone that we can't seem to make go away without finding some way. So I will be back to all three of you to try to help do this. When I met with Andrew, I was asking for some assistance on that. I think it's got to be a joint effort with all of us. I think we're all in this together, and I think if we all work together, we can expedite this a lot quickly than going off on separate phases. Happy to answer your questions, that's my story tonight.
Thank you. Glad you're feeling good.
I just wanted to ask, Russ, is there, the site inspection, is that going to be open to anyone who wants the site inspections that are going to be done? Is that going to be open to the general public? If I want to tag along, can I do that?
Go ahead. If I understand correctly, the question is, is the public invited? It is a public meeting, so I see no reason. My style would be, if there's 100 people there, there's only going to be the board talking, unless you can get some question to us before. So I don't look at it as a given tape. I don't want to get it into an argument and discussion between the different individuals involved. But the public wants to see how the planning board operates, I don't think any of us are opposed to that at all.
I was talking about the site inspections that you're going to be doing.
Where are your muck boots?
They're burning like a tire.
Are there any other public comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, we're going to close the public comment session. The next item on the agenda is old business, the discussion with the Code Enforcement Officer Scott Mickford regarding the notice of violation letters. Scott is unable to be with us this evening, this afternoon. For the record, the Code Enforcement Officer has sent out two notices of violation and orders for corrective action, the topic being dangerous structures nuisance. Two separate lots owned by two separate individuals in two separate parts of town. And the memo to the select board from the CEO dated the seventeenth of February, "You have now received two notices of violations for dangerous nuisance of structures and/or vehicle junkyard. Both owners were sent a letter to respond to, I have not heard from either party. I have written the notices for your review prior to sending them to each party by return receipt. Based on the material submitted, it is the select board that directs this to the court by way of the town attorney once mailed and returned received, or the receipt is returned. I thought about the land use ordinances for the complaints, but found them to be lacking in detail, whereas the statutes seem more likely for success. In my complaint, if my complaint was based only on the land use ordinances, then the owners would have the opportunity to take it to the town of Owl's Head Appeals Board. But since this is a statute, a state statute, I remain unsure if the appeals board can even review this. I suggest MMA or town attorney to help with the question. I will be in Portland at Scarborough February 22nd from mid-morning to evening with appointments, unable to attend today's meeting." Any questions from the select board?
No, I think that dangerous buildings, you know, I think we can go forward with that because both of them are dangerous. I care for dangerous buildings, never mind the junkyard and stuff like that.
Right. Tom?
No. Are we signing it now?
No, we're gonna, this is the information that we have. Scott's gonna wait for our direction and which way to go. Our experience with dangerous buildings is, we have experience with dangerous buildings, as we know, and it's all in the state statute, really has nothing to do with town limits. So we'll address that again at the next meeting. Next item of business is new business. First item on the new business on the agenda is general informational update by the Chair of the Owl's Head South Thompson Solid Waste Corporation. Bruce Coulson is the Chair, Walter Reitz is the Secretary Treasurer. I'll defer to Bruce to start it off.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Bruce, you can take that off if you want, I might echo so much.
Good afternoon, everybody. For those of you who don't know, I'm Bruce Coulson. I'm one of the representatives for the town of Owl's Head, and I am the Chair of the Owl's Head Solid Waste Corporation in Thomaston, on the Bottom Lane. So I'm here to give you an update of how things are going over there. It's kind of the State of the Union address of garbage. We're gonna talk trash. First of all, I'd like to thank you for attending our tri-town informational meeting a while back. I hope it was some help to you in understanding our needs and goals. It certainly points out some of the challenges our board has faced over the years and past year. I hope you were able to get answers to most, if not all, of your questions. So with that said, does the board have any questions about that meeting or comment?
No. Very prominent.
Thanks. Well, more coming up here shortly, but I got five more items on this list, and right on the top is budget. I'm sure that's a burning question with everybody's mind. This year's budget, for the first time ever, has come in with a significant. Okay, I don't know. If you want to slide right up here, because you probably have some of the answers to the question. This year, for the first time ever, we've had a huge significant increase in our budget. In past years, we've been able to keep the budget within a one to three percent increase. A lot of years with a zero percent increase. But given the situation of the world today, everything has spiraled out of control with cost, which has driven our budget big time. I know a lot of questions about the budget, is it due to the construction and renovations that's planned on coming up? And the answer to that is mostly no. 2021 budget was presented to the towns. There were significant increases there. Remember, Gordon, we had some pay increases. We tried to even the board on some of the personnel stuff and pay increases and whatnot. And that board came back with financing a renovation project with a zero increase to the towns, all three. That project was funded, fully funded, and covered with a zero increase. Unfortunately, today, over the past year, things have skyrocketed. We've lost some income over the sticker sales. If you noticed, there's a line on that, sticker sales are down. We've had some line items that increased, such as the overweight on the loads. That was one of them. We've had to increase our pay scale again for the employees. Our sticker sales, excuse me, has dropped about $1,700. That's a significant drop. Seventeen thousand, I'm sorry. Good thing I got my Secretary and Treasurer over here. Our overweights have doubled. This is what we budgeted. We budgeted $4,500 for overweights. It came in at $8,055. Without that scale, it's going to get worse, so we've increased that line. Bookkeepers, we've increased her hours, she's putting in a lot of time. It's very hard for her to keep up with things with the hours that were allotted us, we increased that. Operators' cost, with everything going up, we've had to give them an increase in their pay. So those are some of the line items that went up to drive that budget to where it is. Some of these budget items, line items, we found that we funded pretty accurately. Some years, we had overfunded them, so there was a surplus left over. That surplus was rolled back into the next coming budget to lower the cost. We were not able to do that this year. Any surplus that we had at all got capped to cover the overruns. So that is what's significantly driving your increase in your budget. Got anything else to add to that, Walt?
I'll cover some things when you're done with your list of five, if that's okay.
Okay, sure. Well, I'm kind of sticking with the budget, so if you want to wrap that up.
All right.
All right, let me start by trying to, by answering Linda's questions. Yeah, I'm Walter Reitz, I'm from South Thomaston, I'm on the select board in South Thomaston. I'm also on the transfer station board, and I am its Secretary and Treasurer of the corporation. So let me wind back to the funding of the project. In South Thomaston last year, the town meeting created a reserve account which was funded by the perk funds. I think you guys did something similar. Thomaston was a little bit different in how they handled it. And subsequently, in creating that reserve account, the town authorized the select board to distribute the funds for the specific purpose of the renovation, which the select board did in September or last spring. So all three towns sent us, sent the transfer station their perk funds, and they'd pretty much been earmarked for that purpose right from the get-go, four or five years ago. So over $600,000. The transfer station board, the Board of Directors, has authority to borrow up to $400,000 on its own authority. To borrow more than that would require an increase in that authorization, and that would require an amendment to the inter-local agreement. So $400,000 plus perk funds, we ended up with $1,049 to fund the project. And then we got an initial bid, and we went out to bid, and we had three bidders, and the construction bid was $970,000. So we were slapping five a year ago, or nine months ago, actually. However, inflation, COVID, whatever intervened, and the original bidder gave us a $1,300,000 revised construction bid. And so we went to the second bidder, and they came in at $1,290. So we're not funded as of right now. But I think the answer to the question is that were we to want more funding, we would want to increase our borrowing authority, and that would require an affirmative vote or an affirmative amendment by all three towns. So that's where that stands. Does that answer your questions? Okay. So in the next couple of days, we're meeting with the construction company.
That's tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, yeah. The engineering firm, and one of the vendors, and our board to hash out what are our options. And I think, you know, there are several options. Do a fit within the budget envelope, which means a reduction of scope to get down to our $1,049. We've already spent some of that, by the way. We bought $103,000 worth of new compacters, two of which have been installed, and two of which are in storage in Thomaston. And we also bought the scale, which was funded actually from our contingency. So we're still short, and we're gonna try to figure out what to do about that, what are the right options. And there is not universal agreement, I think, on the board as to what approach we take. So more to follow on that after tomorrow night and after our regular business meeting. Couple things about the budget, just to tick and tie some things. I think Bruce mentioned, for the last four years, we have generated a surplus, a spending surplus against budget. And that's a good news, bad news story. Sometimes you generate a surplus because you have overbudgeted for things, and it rolls to surplus, and you see this in the town finances as well. If you keep doing that, under-budgeting and creating surplus, we're not being nice to the taxpayers. So what our practice has been for the last four years is when we have generated a surplus, we basically take the surplus and cut it in half. We put half of it into our contingency, and we put the other half into reducing the assessment. And that is what has resulted in essentially zero increase in the assessments over the last three years. This year, we didn't generate a surplus, and we got hit with increased costs. Bruce went over some of them. The one that is sort of related to the, well, there's one that's definitely related to the project, and that's the $25,000 or so a year of debt service from the $400,000 that we borrowed. the $25,000 or so thousand a year of debt service from the $400,000 that we borrowed. You saw that last year, by the way. So this year, it's a little bit less, and will be a little bit less every year going forward. I think the term of the note is 15 years. More importantly, with the increase to the project, if we were to go forward with the current plan at the current funding level, we would exhaust our contingency. And so our current budget calls for refunding or refreshing the contingency to the $250,000. And at the time, we knew that if we were even able to fund to the to the exact number of the $1,290, that something would go wrong, and that we would need that contingency. So that's out there right now as a to-be-addressed item. And I think finally, as we as we mentioned at the Tri-Town meeting, we are going to change our fiscal year to match your, the three towns' fiscal years. And the shape that that will probably take, or at least that I will recommend to the board on Thursday night, is that we do a six-month budget and then a 12-month budget. The six-month budget will terminate on June 30, and the new budget will start on July 1. What we will shoot for in that is to have the first six months' assessment be the same as last year. And then we'll make, if we have to make up the difference, it will it will appear in a new budget, the budget that will start on July 1 and go until June 30 of next year. So and then the $50,000 will be up for debate and discussion as to how necessary that is. So some relief is on the way in terms of, I know in South Thomaston, we're short $13,000 to meet the first half of the year's assessment because it was as a surprise to them as it was to you, and they're about as happy about it as you guys are. Any questions?
Yeah, I guess I don't get the whole bid situation. If you bid on a project, how can you then not do the job or raise your price?
We didn't lock them in. We didn't lock them in.
No, we didn't.
Well, we had to go through extensive permitting process, and we weren't funded at the time. So we had to get the funding. So in retrospect, contract would have been in order, but I think there still would have been an out for the bidder, as there almost always is for extraneous or, you know, exceptional events, which is what happened. The bid was for an all-metal building, and the price of metal just went through the roof. They couldn't afford to do the job.
Plus, the availability of the building was gonna be almost a year out before we could even get the building to start with. Just like everything else, shipping and the supply is crazy. Some things you can't even get. You gotta wait a year to even get it.
Yeah, I have a question on the debt service, $26,72. What is that paid for? Is that part of the 400?
It is the 400,000.
Okay. And we, you know, our budget increased last year, and we voted on that to kind of answer Linda's question. It was in our budget, was part of the debt service, because I was, when I, I think, made $20,000.
Right. It was a specific line item. I think it was $27,000 last year.
Including the debt service, so that's already covered. It would only be the extra that you'd have to redo the interlocal for, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The Town of Thomaston, excuse me, the Town of Thomaston Planning Board put the Solid Waste Corporation through a bunch of hoops. It extended the length of time from the beginning of planning to permitting. How much of, in fact, was that in this budget issue?
That was a huge factor. If you want to review their minutes, they had it YouTubeed. At the time, they were putting us through those hoops. I had a pretty extensive detailed explanation for them that time was the essence here. You know, things were that escalate, prices were going up. It would not surprise me if this project went up a quarter of a million plus. I didn't get a very sympathetic ear from their planning board. That was an all-alright story, was one of the quotes. You can hear it for yourself on YouTube. Long behold, a few months later, we were facing a quarter of a million plus. That was a pretty accurate prediction.
I was on the board at the time. We talked about that for a number of months, the delay, 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 delay from, you know, call it what it was. I mean, they delayed it for whatever the reasons they had. That didn't help any of us. If the project, if the project could not be done with the amount of money budgeted, what have you done to try to cut back on the project so that it fits the budget and still maintains a level of safety and efficiency at that location?
At this present time, we've done nothing since that informational meeting. We do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow night, as I sent out you guys the notice of that. Anybody who wants to sit in on that and listen to it, that's fine. We have a meeting with the engineer. We have a meeting with the general contractor and one of the suppliers. They're gonna put forth what they feel is an option and what we can do. We've given them a budget. We know what the budget is, and we told them we wanted to stay in that budget. That's without going to the towns and asking for permission to extend our credit. We're trying to keep it in with the money that we have at hand. That, what they give us for options will be looked at. One of the options, as you know from the informational meeting the other night, was do we forego the building for the time being? That's part of it. What do we do with the scale? That may be part of it. We don't have many concrete answers for it at this point. We have a lot of things on the table, all of which are gonna be looked at. It all depends a lot what they say tomorrow night.
So there have been some issues raised related to safety of the facility over the last two months or so. Is any of the funding that you currently have at hand going to be used in any way to remediate any of that?
We hope not.
Is the issue as serious as someone make it sound?
At the point, at this present time, we haven't found any of the serious issues over there. There's been two of us on this board that have gone through and looked at that facility. We haven't seen anything jump right out on us. Thursday night, it's on the agenda to discuss whether we have MMA going to do an inspection on this, but they're not electrical and hydraulic professionals. So is that really gonna fulfill what we need? There is another candidate that could go and look at it besides the engineer. That's another option. Do we have Haley and Ward go in, the engineers we're working through now? Do we have them go in and pay them the money to inspect this? That's all on the agenda for Thursday night to address some of the issues.
Thomaston Recycling has raised an issue with the scale and the necessity for the scale, and it relates to the overweights. Is that a red herring?
Can be. I mean, right now, we're...
Is it a red herring on their part, that they'd rather not see the scale there to protect?
That's correct. But I find that coincidental that they're raising that question when they made a significant profit off not having the scale.
Yeah, that's quite funny.
Exactly.
Plus, the scale's already purchased.
The scale is purchased, yes.
Yeah, I had a question. You talk about stickers. I think I know the answer. You know, the actual was $44,000. Is that because they're two-year stickers, and you're not gonna have any? And then you've got the budget at $10,000 on the stickers?
Right.
I mean, why, if we took in $44,000, how come you only budgeted $10,000? Is that because it's a two-year sticker? I'm assuming that that's two years, so...
Right. The $10,000, the new sticker year, the new sticker two-year period will start January 1, 2023. So we will start getting revenue from that in October of this year, which will be much less than what we got, you know, in the last year.
Unless a whole bunch of new people committed one of those stickers.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We ought to have a Budget Committee member, Bill George. Can I take the chair?
Sure.
Thank you. Am I supposed to take off my mask? Okay. This is the first, my name is Bill George. I live on Six Ledgewood Lane. Pardon me. Lost my amplifier. This is the first time I saw this. And just to go over some high numbers, it looks at the very top like we're getting annual income of about, if you take the leftmost column, $43,021. Your budget, actual, that was budgeted, actual came at 66. 22 looks like $31,000. Is that, am I reading this correctly?
I believe so. This is the first time I've seen this myself.
Oh, all right. Am I reading this correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. Then you go down, way down to the bottom, and it says total facility expense. And it says, and this is where my bifoc was go crazy. I think it says $630,000 was the expense in 2021. Am I reading that in the far-left column? And then 629 is actual, that was budget, actual was 629, 602, and we're budgeting $700,000 for '22. So talking really big picture, the revenues are like, roughly speaking, $50,000. Expenses are at a multiple of, you know, 10, 15 times. So and then what we do to make all this go away, and I hate to speak in a pejorative fashion, is that you assess Thomaston, and I'm really happy that Thomaston picks up a big chunk of this.
They have been all along.
And that's great, and I love Thomaston. And South Thomaston, and then Owl's Head, we, for instance, Owl's Head would be, had budgeted $145,416, and it looks like you're budgeting $173,864. So the question that I am posing to you, and I know nothing about trash other than how to fill it into a garbage bag, is that when you look at options, one of the options would be, and Gordon and I, and I've had these discussions in different contexts, that maybe we just don't have the volume of business to make things work, like the ambulance. We just don't have the number of trips to make it worthwhile running our own ambulance. So the out-of-the-box thought I have for you as an option is that if you take the $173,864, which is Owl's Head's budgeted assessment, and you get the U.S. Census of the number of houses in Owl's Head, it's 450. It comes out to like $388 per year per family. So maybe what you do is to say, one of the options is that we've chased good money after bad. This is not working. We can't make this thing work. Maybe what we do is we say, we stop. And we say to each household, here's a list of trash haulers. You call them. And we get out of the trash hauling business, because this is hopeless. And we're, but you just, I heard these discussions, and I'm not sure what you're investing in, but you're putting like a million, million and three more into this. Like, wait a second, it doesn't, it's not working. And no one wants to pay more in sticker fees, but the equitable thing would be that each family pays for trash hauling what they have generated in the way of trash. And maybe it's a lot less than $388 per family. So let's just call it a day. And that, I think, should be an option that we put on the table. Like, why are we doing this? Like, why do we have an ambulance service? Like, wait a second, it's just not working. The people at Rockland do a wonderful job. Let them take over. So I'd like you to consider that as an option.
All right. Well, as a Select Board member, I do, because we have more than one constituent in South Thomaston who is all about pay as you throw.
Yeah.
So that's always on the table.
Yeah.
I don't know what the right decision process is, but that's certainly not something that gets dismissed, at least at our board.
Well, and I'm gonna make a joke, and I don't mean to make, put Gordon, pick on Gordon, but if Gordon's family is generating all this trash, he should pay for it. And if I'm not, contrary-wise, generating any trash, then my rate should be lower. So why should I be paying and subsidizing Gordon's huge gener... And again, just making a little joke here. So anyways, it's a thought. I'd like you to think about that, because I think it's an option as to, because you're talking a million-dollar investment, and it's something that is not gonna ever return anything. And I know that's not your purpose, but it's like, why are we, we're stewards of the people's money, and this is, I think it's a questionable investment. So anyways.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay.
So to follow up on Bill's point about if his trash generation is significantly less than mine, why should he have to pay as much? It has some validity until you start comparing that to the school system and other services that are available townwide. The ambulance is a good example. Fire department would be a good example. If you never have to call an ambulance to your home, why should your taxes be paying a portion of the service that we provide, that we get provided from the city of Rockland, versus if I'm a multiple user, frequent flyer, how do you justify that? So the bottom line is, we need a place to put our trash and our waste. And if this doesn't work out, what are the options? What has your corporation board thought that in terms of the future? If this thing falls apart in two years, what is the Town of Owl's Head and the Town of South Thomaston and Thomaston going to do about their waste?
Well, first of all, it's state mandated that every community has to provide a way to get rid of their waste. That's mandated. Now, whether that's through our facility or you decide to have curbside pickup, kind of Owl's Head can say, you know, heck with this. We'll hire out waste management, and they'll do like they do in Portland and Bangor and other communities. You put your solid waste out on the curb, and this guy comes along and takes it, and they can send it to EcoMaine. Your obligation to the state is EcoMaine. They're the end user. You're given the place, but does everybody in this room wanna drive all the way down to Portland to deposit their trash? No. So this is why it's a transfer facility. Gives you a local, easy place to remove your household refuge. But you could easily just say, we're gonna close this place up, and it's all gonna be curbside pickup. You know, there's some pros and cons to that as well. You don't have the, you don't have the ability to do it yourself. A lot of complaints I hear in the town is, I'm a do-it-yourselfer. You know, we've said, well, you know, hire a trash collector to come get you. Oh, no, I do everything myself. So taking that ability away usually raises quite a wrath. So, you know, there's multiple things.
I guess just a question on that. If we all win that way, wouldn't the hauler charge me more money to pick up my trash? Because now they've got to pay all the fees either that, they're gonna run the trucks up to Hamden or wherever the play, you know. It possibly could cost us that much. You know, they're gonna charge $10 a week to pick up your trash, then that's $520. So, you know, worth looking at, obviously, in the market. But I'm not so sure that it would benefit us.
Tom?
Walter? Can I put my Select Board member hat?
Sure.
Make sure that we can pick you up on the recording.
So...
Slide right over, Walter.
To me, the governing, the governing document, if you will, here, is the interlocal agreement. We, the Trash Board, or the Cooperative Board, is just the implementers of a decision that was made in 1973 or '83.
2007, it was...
Well, but it started in '80. It goes all the way back. So, you know, my suggestion is that what Bill says is exactly true, and we see the same thing with our ambulance service and our fire department. And we've been on a kick. One of the first things that we say now, when we start doing the budgets, is that those services are not sustainable over the long run as they exist today. But at the same time, they're necessary. This probably, this falls into the same category, especially with the state mandate. So to me, this is another opportunity for the three town, the three Select Boards to get together and kind of discuss where they all are. And I think they're all pretty much in the same place, as having these services that they can't sustain anymore. You know, we have the situation where we have the oldest population, average age. We used to be number one in the state that's number one. We're now number five, which is a small, and you guys, you're paying the least assessment this year because you lost more population than any of the three towns in the last, during the last census period. So to me, it's, this is another opportunity for, all of us are smarter than any of us, and the way to change how we do the... than any of us, and the way to change how we do the solid waste is for the three boards or the three towns to change the, the construct of the inter-local agreement, if that's what they wanna do. You know, it's not something that, that we sit around saying, how are we gonna do this? You know, we are really implementing your instructions, and your instructions are contained in the inter-local agreement. So, and I would welcome that, although I'm pretty much termin-, termin-, turning out, so.
Bruce, thank you for coming, Walter, thank you.
Just got a couple more things, I know you wanna get moving, but, yeah, the budget's taken care of, I take it. Walter's touched on moving the fiscal year, we're looking into that, that's in the lawyer's hands, we got the terminology that we have you submit to the town to change the map for the fiscal year. That has to go before the three towns to change the inter-local agreement, to change our fiscal year. That now is in the lawyer's hands, if he gives us a thumbs up, that will come to you guys, and you'll have to have your meetings to do that. Any questions on that real quick?
No, I think you do.
Probably not gonna save any money, it just makes it easier.
Well, we, we have to submit our budget to you with the first of the year, but you're in a worse position than the other two towns because their meeting is, their fiscal year is coming right up. So they only have to carry it for a couple, three months. Thomaston, maybe six months, but you don't, your fiscal year don't start until what, July?
July first.
Yeah, so you've gotta carry us for that, that seven months with a new, with a new assessment, that's gonna be tough. So we're trying to bring that so that your budget will be able to obtain that new assessment, and that's why.
Yeah, I think, and I know thirty years ago, I think it was when we changed our fiscal year, it eliminated any tax anticipation notes, because our year, you know, wouldn't matter with the tax reform, that worked for that, but this is totally, totally different.
So that's, that's the driving factor on that, is there anything else on that?
I was here when we did it. I, so.
Go ahead, Bruce.
So, the only other, one of the other things was the construction meeting, we met, we touched on that, we pretty much discussed that, that's tomorrow night. That's a Zoom meeting at six PM. I've given the selectmen and a few others notice of that, so they wanna send in listening to see where that's going. That will be followed up, it's after that meeting, once we have a chance to digest the information and get an idea of where we're going, then we will be calling for another tri-count meeting, public meeting, to bring them up to speed on what we found and what we may be going to work on. And then, lastly, and not least, a trucking contract this year comes up. One with TRI is running out December thirtieth, thirty-first. We have to find a new trucking outfit, or keep the same one. So in the next few months, we're gonna be putting together a good package for that. Who knows where the pricing on that's gonna go? It's a new ballgame.
Who else is out there for that?
Libby has bitted on it the past years. We have Casella in Pine Tree Engineering, I don't know about Waste Management, I don't think they ever have, but they may. There's a new guy, Ford Landscaping, is starting to dabble into that. I don't know about your trucking company that has the waste for the Stump Dump DMJ, they may, they're a backup for, for TRI.
So there are others.
There are others out there.
We jump in.
That is it, my friend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bruce, would you, with or without your secretary of treasurer, be willing to come back and give us an update in a month or two following this meeting that's taking place this week?
Sure.
Doesn't necessarily have to be immediately announced, but just keep us apprised of what's going on.
Sure, well, I guess, I got one question from the select board. Seeing we don't have a selectman on the board anymore, and that's how you used to get your updates, what do you want for a report? Do you want one monthly, do you want one bimonthly, quarterly?
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Probably monthly, I'm not sure we need a report every month that you have, you meet once a month.
Right.
Yeah.
But most of the time.
Unless there's something really, you know, dynamic that's happened or whatever.
Most time, it's routine, once a dime. You think the census for that every three months?
Yeah.
I don't think any, any more than that.
Right, no.
If, if that, so.
Unless something, you know, really needs to be brought to our attention.
Well, you're the bosses, so I'm gonna follow your lead.
In this particular case, though, because of the circumstances and the turmoil, I think it's important that we have a more frequent update.
Well, true, because this is, this is not the ordinary. As I just laid out, we got a busy year coming ahead of us, we're all gonna be putting them through all the time, so.
Well, you have minutes, right, they could be forwarded to us.
Well, yes, we, they're supposed to be forwarded to the town so you can post them, so.
You have the minutes of, you know, what happened at the last meeting, so if there's any questions, then we can call on you to come, you know.
Sure.
Explain it or give us more detail.
Absolutely.
That one needs sufficient, for not, you know, for not, maybe a quarterly update.
So we'll do that, quarterly updates, and if you have any questions or see anything, you can get attached to me and I'll come in.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Walter, be sure to pay the toll while I lay back.
I do it, Walter.
Thank you both. Next item on the agenda is a report from the Fire Chief. Fire Chief Frank Ross is not able to be with us tonight, but his assistant Fire Chief John Gammage is here. John, if you please step up or sit up.
Good afternoon, John Gammage, Assistant Fire Chief. I think you folks have the permit's report. There are a couple of things that stand out from his report that he wanted me to update you on. Most important one is that when we took possession of our new Tanker Truck Engine One, it did not have any brackets for us to mount breathing apparatus in the truck. So we were going to make our own, and when we spoke with the manufacturer, he actually offered to do that for us, and they have been since installed by them, and we are using them, so.
Was that, was that installation part of the overall cost, or was that additional cost?
Yes, it was, it was part of our original request, so they, once we got into gig checks and okay, we're missing this, so they, they made good on it and they stood behind it.
So on your checklist when the truck came in, was there anything else that was absent or that needed to be?
There was, actually, one of the things that we were concerned about, or we had specifically requested, is that we have a lot of equipment that's battery-operated, such as flashlights, that sort of thing, that's mounted in the vehicles, AEDs, all that, needs to be charged constantly while it's sitting in the station because it's not being used. So we had asked that there be ports installed in the trucks, in the compartments to do that. The new truck, because of the LED lighting and things like that, did not have it. They have made good on that, and we're all set with that as well.
So anything left on the punch list, if you know?
Nothing that's significant. There's seen safety tape for one of the doors, it's little stuff, but it's not a big deal at all.
All right, and the truck does fit?
Yes. I, I will say that we will not be putting that truck in the station empty. Of course, it does us no good anyway to be empty, for the simple reason that it will not go in the bay door if we did that. So it's fully loaded, three thousand gallons of water, two hundred gallons of foam, and with that full load onboard, when we back that truck into the station, we have a two-and-a-half-inch clearance at the top of that truck. So we have to make absolutely certain that there's no ice built up around the door, anything like that at all is gonna raise the back of that truck, and we're gonna have a problem. So we are looking into that, we have spoken with the construction folks, we've spoken with PDQ Doors, he's come down, took a look at it, see if we need to, well, see what we need to do at this point, it's functional, we're just being careful.
Yeah, as you should.
And the other thing we did was we moved where we were parking the tanker because of the apron. Initially, we, we kept our tanker in the farthest bay from the personnel door, because it's usually the last truck that you would get into, but we've had to move it because of the space requirement and the fact that when the truck left the station, there was a dip in the apron where it was parked, or initially where the old tanker was parked. So we've had to shuffle our trucks around, and we were also worried about the length of the new truck. When you leave the station, if you cut the corner too quick, you may take out somebody's car who's sitting in the parking lot who just responded to your fire call. So we made the adjustments and we're training our personnel on the truck now.
How many members are there currently on the roll?
One of our concerns, I think he has in his report.
Yeah, this report, John, was, was written on, what was it?
I think the one you have is his end of year report for twenty-twenty-one. One of the things that we are doing is we're going over our roster because the, we're having an issue, I guess is a fair way to say it, our concern is turnout, not just for fire calls or for training sessions. We've had three business meetings where we didn't have a forum, we couldn't even meet. You know, our bylaw states seven people, we didn't have enough people to have a meeting.
That's for the association, that's not.
Right, it does not, right.
To be clear, it's not the fire department.
It is not, right. So, you know, we are functioning, without any problem there. We have, it was twenty-four members, out of the twenty-four members, we have about half who are active. So we revise our squads, we've moved a bunch of folks over to inactive status, they've been received communications from the chief that they may not respond to calls. They have to, you know, we're required to have Bureau of Labor training once a year. A lot of these folks haven't been around for a couple of years, and if you're not going to training, even updated training, we can't use you. I'd love to have these people back, but.
Are you able to comment on the chief's condition?
I will say that he's looking forward to getting back out on the road, beyond that, I wouldn't comment on it because I don't know what would be a violation.
Okay. Lynn, do you have any questions?
I don't, thank you.
Tom?
Not really, we always come up to the ones, we've come to the time when we should consolidate with Rockland and have Rockland do the coverage.
Is that a comment or is that a question?
It's just, it seems more and more likely as the years go by. I guess that's a comment.
Tom, how would you respond to that?
My comment would be, and we have spoken with Rockland Fire Chief, we looked at budgets to find out what might be the best option. And basically, in order to do that, and Rockland Fire Department's budget will go, have to go through the roof. And in order to cover that, the townspeople here in Owl's Head, we have to make that difference up, so that we have coverage. Yeah, our personnel is a, is a concern for us, we're just, we're not getting the members to come forward, and the members who are coming forward don't wanna participate in a hundred and eighty hours of firefighter training, they wanna do some basic stuff and help out wherever they can, and that's great, that's wonderful, we'll take all that help. But at the end of the day, I need people who I can send into a burning building, and that's where the concern comes, and that's why we have our mutual aid in place. As far as an administrative-type function, I, I really, we, we played with some dollars and cents a while back, and I can't quote the numbers now, but it was a tremendous amount of money that our budget would go up, to pay Rockland to cover this town.
The situation is not unique to Owl's Head.
It is not.
Every community in every town in Knox County and throughout the country is experiencing a lack of volunteers for this type of activity. We are very fortunate, we are very fortunate that the Knox County Mutual Aid System is in place, it's a very strong mutual aid system.
Very strong.
On any structure, correct me if I'm wrong, any structure fighter call that comes into Owl's Head is an automatic response from Rockland.
And South Thomaston, and St. George.
And of course, with the exception of Rockland being a full-time, twenty-four-hour service. St. George and South Thomaston and Warren, if you need them for water, they have the same issue.
They do, you gotta get out of bed two o'clock in the morning and get to the station
What else can you share with us that, I'm gonna put you on the spot.
Yeah, that's okay, I, I'm not sure, I think, did Frank send you the request on the American Recovery Act money?
Yeah, that's a separate item on the agenda, unless you have.
No, I'm gonna put that at the bottom of my list. I will say that I know he's looking forward to getting out there and getting things going. One of the concerns that he shared in his report to you, and I'm gonna bring up now as well, we have several of our members who are members of other departments. That's a double-edged sword, because they're getting some training from the other departments, and in some cases, they're getting a lot more experience because of the call volume. We're fortunate in this town that we just don't have that type of call volume, thankfully. But that also is another sword, because your members' morale drops, their experience is minimal because they're not responding to calls because we don't have them. One of the concerns that we as officers are discussing is, we have, again, several folks who are on multiple departments. Most of those folks are our officers, and we need our officers in town to take charge and take firefighting crews in a home and that sort of thing. If they're in another town helping out, they're no good to us. So we're going to have to visit that heart right off and take a look at what we're allowing and who we're allowing and what we're gonna do with that.
As it relates to training and capabilities, town of South Thomaston is a mutual aid, immediate mutual aid responder to Rockland, regardless of structure fighter or of anything major. The town of Owl's Head is not.
Correct.
Why is that?
Personnel, turnout, we just don't have the people, and South Thomaston is fortunate, they have several of their members who are in town most of the time, they have businesses and things local, they're able to get to their station. We just don't have that luxury.
My concern in that regard is reciprocation. Rockland, we know is gonna come regardless.
Yes.
But we're not able to provide that same kind of service back.
We do, in their alarm assignments, as the alarm assignments are advancing, one of the things that, where we come into play is we bring the water. And the water would be for Dodge's Mountain area, that, anything past Old County Road, where there isn't a hydrant system, Rockland's fortunate, they have a strong hydrant system. We have a minimal hydrant system, but it works. And that's where we would come in, so that's really what we're used for is water.
The fire in South Thomaston last week on Buttermilk Lane, how many pieces of apparatus and how many people turned out from Owl's Head?
We took two trucks, we took the new engine, and I had to bring the second, our engine two, which is also a tanker, and we used both of those trucks. The new tanker performed flawlessly, no complaints whatsoever, it worked well. Engine two had a mechanical problem on scene, we were able to fix it on scene, get it back to the station, and it's since been repaired. But it was still able to function as a fire truck, so we were okay with that, we just couldn't move it for a little bit.
I know you were on scene, how many other firefighters in Owl's Head were present?
We had six people there. And the, the good part about that, unfortunately, it takes real fires to get some experience, is that one of our firefighters had never seen a fire before, so she got some exposure.
Sure.
And came up to me afterwards, she said, I learned so much today, an entire hundred and eighty hours of training in a classroom could not match five minutes on a fire ground. And she's absolutely right.
Yeah, there's nothing like it.
Sorry.
Okay, any questions, Tom?
No.
John, thanks for that report. While you're here, the next item on the agenda is to discuss the written request from the Fire Chief to provide a one-time payment to town personnel who worked during the period of the declared state of made COVID-related emergency using American Rescue Plan Act funds. We have a written request related to that agenda item from the Fire Chief dated the third of January. I'd like to request the selectmen consider paying town personnel who worked during the pandemic a one-time payment of fifty cents per hour for the time worked during the period of fifteen March twenty-twenty to thirty June twenty-twenty-one, the state of made emergency period. This would be funded by money the town received from the American Rescue Plan Act, respectfully submitted Frank Ross. I have to assume that the chief is not referring specifically only to firefighters when it talks about town personnel. He doesn't say firefighters, he says town personnel, do you know?
I, I can tell you from, I'm speaking about firefighters, so I'm, I'm gonna assume obviously, you know, your town office people were here, you transferred, your stump dump folks were there, but I do know that, that what he sent me only covers fire personnel.
Do you know how he landed on fifty cents an hour?
I know that he did some internet research to find out who was doing what out there, and he, he come back with everything from five dollars to, you know, career firefighters. It's, it's all over the place, and, yeah, I think you have a proposal in front of you where he's, he scaled it at a fifty cent an hour, a dollar an hour, and two dollars an hour, just to give us some figures.
Yeah, can I speak to that? I was, Walter stayed here, because the town of South Thomaston did that. And it wasn't just for town personnel, the big store, because they were frontline workers, they received it, and I think fifty cents was put in somewhere from the state or something, I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure where the 50 cents came from. But that's what they got. And it went, because we were in declared state of emergency by the government for that period of time. And so I know they did the Geek Store. They offered it to maritime, but that was so confusing because they had people working at South Thomaston and then some worked at Rockland, some worked at Warren. So maritime declined it. But I know the Geek Store got it. And I assume the office people, South Thomaston office people, maybe the firefighters too, received it. And it was paid for through the, through, through the money.
Right.
Well, you know, you just made reference to a proposal that the chief provided. The only thing we have is the letter that he wrote in January about 50 cents an hour.
I apologize. I thought you had, I thought you had his written proposal with members and number of hours.
He's done the math and show how much it paid. And they also paid, well, in all cases, they paid the towns or whoever's the Geek Store. I use that for an example for no for sure. Their portion of the FICR, Medicare, unemployed, all those other taxes too. They provide, and I can't remember the amount of the check that was forwarded to the, to the Geek Store. They paid for all of that to help the act. So it was no cost at all to the store or to the town or anything.
I don't think that his proposal includes that. I think he's just, you know, just strictly going with dollars and cents. You know, he has a $2 an hour here. And if that were awarded based on the hours that personnel worked for that timeframe, he's, he's broken down each person's hours. It's $3,174. It'd be a $2 for everybody. And that would be one, you know, payment for each person is different.
Chief, could we get a copy of that?
Absolutely, yes. I'm sorry. I apologize. I thought you had it.
You can leave it with the place over here and they'll get the copy back to you.
Absolutely. You're welcome to this one. I have.
A point was raised on whether or not expenditures have to be approved at a town meeting.
In terms of ARPA funds?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't know. A number of towns have domed it out. So I, you know, it seems like someone would, you know, catch him up on that. If we have to go to a town meeting to do this.
Well, that's easy enough to learn, I think, if I may. Did you give us some information regarding that?
Yeah, in the class that we took last week, the board, there was some representatives there from different towns. And the one that spoke said that they actually put it on the, on Warren.
Was that a decision made locally or was that?
Through their town.
Okay, so it wasn't necessarily state required.
I don't, I don't believe so. Right.
They just made that decision to do that one.
Because it's the town's money. They should give the town the, the work.
There's also extensive reporting that you have to do and you can't just double it out. There is a report that once it's spared, it has to go back into the state, I assume. And then maybe forward it to the, to the feds because it is federal money.
But if we did, with the interlocal crash agreement having to be voted on, it would be easy enough to have that at the same meeting.
Well, I guess we have to determine whether or not that's infrastructure related strictly to the town.
But just from what you said, that, that $2 will be the $3,000, whatever it sounds like, that would be the way to go.
We're going to do it. Are we going to do $2 to the fire department, only 50 cents to other people?
Well, what I'd like to do is see the model that the chief has put together. And we can review that as a body and determine whether or not other staff, employees.
Right, because if South Thomaston, they send a letter out. So, you know, it wouldn't be fair because we have a store that stayed open all during it. We have a nursing home on the Carter. Those people had to work every day. So it's not just town personnel. It would be anybody that could be, you know, facing it. I don't know about the airport.
Well, I think that would be, that would be part of whatever policy we might develop as a result of this.
I think the airport would follow under that. They're fine.
I'm going to pick on the airport.
Right. Doesn't matter. They're working in town.
Well, they have more than us.
This money is free money, you know.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have on that.
John, anything else that you want?
At this point, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a presentation from the Owl's Head Airport Advisory Committee of that committee's draft proposal of an interlocal agreement between Knox County and the town. Kim Wexler.
Thank you. So I know this has been a long time coming. Lots of us have been working on it. And to clarify the S's, the ad hoc committee, OHAC, everything else before, I finally learned what. In any case, Lauren Dillard, who's an OHAC member, is going to introduce it and go over some talking points. Just briefly, we understand you're not going to get into a big debate about it tonight. Should you have any questions? Brad, who helped write it, who was on the ad hoc committee, is here. Brad Ketcher, who's also on AIPAC. And we hope you, we've got a lot of time and effort into it. We hope this makes sense. We look forward to having a chance to talk about it further when, when you guys are ready. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lauren Dillard, 34 North Shore Drive. And I'm on the Airport Committee.
Could you clarify Airport Committee?
The Owl's Head Airport Committee.
Owl's Head Airport Advisory Committee.
Oh, I thought there was just one A in it. O-H-A-C.
I want to make it clear, not just because you're doing it tonight.
Yeah, no.
I think too often people identify the committee as the Airport Committee. It's the Owl's Head Airport Advisory Committee responsible for advising the select board.
Yes. Okay. So should we make it two As? OHAC?
I'd like it to be identified as Owl's Head Airport Advisory.
Advisory Committee. You got it. Thank you. You received by email, I think a week ago, this, essentially the same document. There are just a couple of minor formatting changes to it. And in preparation for today, I just created a pretty high-level two bullet points that I want to be sure to draw your attention to about this proposed agreement in response to the town vote back in June and meetings that we've held in this room with members of the public. We really are bringing to this assignment a vision of two-way fairness between the town and the county. And I'll hope to touch on that in these two points. In many ways, the agreement that you've gotten and what I've handed out again today is an extension of the 2001 agreement. Parts of it and the structure of it should seem very familiar to you. It's not a radically different document. But the two main points that I wanted to bring to your attention today that were important in the new agreement was, number one, a real exploration of this idea of growth of activity, growth in the intensity of the activity at the airport and expansion of the airport. Originally, the 2001 agreement was very focused on airport boundaries. That is addressed again in this agreement. And it reverts to the original 2001 wording about the airport boundaries being maintained and not expanded and referring to which governing map are those boundaries to be found in. This agreement also goes into the definition of what expansion is. And those aspects of it are, are measures of what's going on at the airport that I think is going to help us be able to talk about the airport using hard facts, using measures of these aspects of activity and intensity so that we're really dealing in facts and, and not feelings. That's a, a good direction that we're going in. And then also, this agreement specifically takes some time to talk about noise as an element of the airport's activities and also greenhouse gases as a concern for us about how to measure and control things that are important to the, the town and all the county citizens in the future. So that's the one thing is that effort is really put in, in this agreement to talk about the, the notion of busyness at the airport. The second point is the proposal of the Joint Board. Now, this isn't a brand-new idea. The county proposed this in their agreement back to us a year ago. It's still proposed to be a six-person board, three members from Owl's Head. And I just wanted to point out it was important to the drafting committee. These members would be elected, not appointed. The duties of this joint board are a more focused role than the previously recommended joint board. It's really contributing a missing ingredient to the back and forth and the dialogue with the county. The missing ingredient is transparency into the airport's plans in terms of what funding is being requested for what purposes. This joint board would not be, and just an advisory board with non-binding recommendations. But it has a real role to play in terms of being informed when funding proposals are being drafted. And it would approve the funding submissions. Not saying that they're approving funding, but they're aware of and approving requests for funding from any source. So this provides with the joint board a real forum for transparency and cooperation, whereas there really isn't that exact role today. So this is one of the additional ways in which that vision of two-way fairness comes into play because there's actually conversations that will need to happen to satisfy that requirement. We mentioned in, I may not have mentioned at the beginning, time is of the essence. Something else came up today that was time was of the essence. It really is, as you know, of the discussions in the planning board. Things are very active right now. There was a really fascinating AIPAC meeting last week. And we look forward as your advisory committee to answer questions that you may have as this continues to make its way to reality.
No, because I need time to read this. I've never received the one. I guess it's sent by email. Received it. Well, the third one I've seen, I saw one way, way back last year or whatever. So I just need time to read it.
Okay. And I hope the summary.
Questions and, you know, suggestions to be after we've read it.
Yeah, I hope the summary helps you kind of look for those two things in there. That, that got special attention.
Right.
Two things, I guess. One, I was just, the mention of jets in the thing kind of worried me. But overall, more, I was wondering what the county's reaction was to this document.
We attempted to meet with Andrew in, I don't remember if it was December or January, and the meeting was canceled at the last minute and not rescheduled. So we attempted to talk with him to go over this. And we haven't yet.
Since Mr. Hark is here, have you seen this document before?
Lauren, please, please say it. I want to.
Oh, okay.
You asking?
Yes. If, if he's seen the document and if so, is there any reaction to it?
Simply yes or no?
Yeah. Well, I was just wondering, is this something that the county finds suitable or something that's, it's the discussion?
If I may, I'm not sure this is the appropriate venue to ask the county whether or not they have a reaction to this tonight any more than we're going to have an immediate reaction as a body. We all need an opportunity to review the document and.
My only point is if it's dead with the county, then why proceed with it?
Yeah, well, I don't think we'll know that until we get down the road a little bit. But that's, that's one of the questions, or questions similar to one I have, Lauren. First of all, thank you for the update and the presentation. This is proposed, the draft, it says 222. There was one that your husband sent out last week. You said it's a little different. Can you identify where on these six or seven pages the difference between what he said and what is here?
There are two differences. One is the title of the agreement. So that's right on page one. The second is a, a blank date that was listed in Section 1 Subsection E.
What page, please?
Having to do with not allowing any jet from the airport.
Yes, and that blank date has been filled in with January 1, 2022.
You said it's on page three?
Yes.
What letter?
Letter E. The very end of that paragraph says January 1, 2022. It's on the right-hand side of the page.
Letter E.
That's it. That's the total change.
Right, and a quick glance through this on page four, specifications, 2A duration. Those are still right.
Yes.
So knowing that there are two partners that would have to dance together to see this happen, in your review and draft of this, if you had to speculate on this document, what part of the document will the county not accept? Could be in agreement with? What would that be?
I can't speculate, but I'm not the only one to speak to this. Perhaps any of the other OHAC members would feel better addressed to answer that question.
Okay, you have any thoughts on that?
So I, I think it's safe to say we don't.
Just so we can.
I think it's safe to say that we don't think the county is going to sign it, send it back tomorrow morning. But we are hopeful to have some meaningful dialogue through the selectmen, with the county, however it's set up. Like Lauren said, we recognize that this is a negotiation. And we have said what, what we like to see. And we're believing that down Owl's Head. And I'm sure the county has, going to have some things they cannot agree with. And we hope that this time we can make it work. That, that's, that's okay.
Thank you. And I think I just have one more question related to on your, the cover sheet. Item 2, Joint Board, six-person, three Owl's Head members elected. How did the drafting committee come up with the decision that they would like to have the Owl's Head members elected versus appointed? How, how did you come to that conclusion?
We just thought that this, there's a lot of interest in the town. And one with the townspeople about what's going on with the airport and what the town cannot do. And I thought it would, I, I was, we thought that it would be, it would be fair if it was elected at a town meeting.
And one more question. It's controversial, I know, but I'm going to ask it. Assuming the interlocal agreement was approved by both parties, and in fact, there was a six-person joint board with three members being from Owl's Head elected, why would the town of Owl's Head want to continue an organization known as the Owl's Head Airport Advisory Committee? Certainly after discussion.
There are different roles. The advisory committee could, on an ongoing basis, keep you apprised of developments at the airport memory we talked about, really bringing facts to the table to be measuring what's happening. That would not be a role of the joint board. The joint board is not an advisory board to one entity making non-binding recommendations. It, it has a, a definitive piece of work to do, what I call the missing ingredient of having dialogue at the point in time when strategic decisions are being visualized, planned for, and funding options are being explored. Very different roles.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to add? Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Okay, Lynn, any questions?
No.
No.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Again, this is the first time I've seen this. It says on the first page...
Bill, identify yourself.
Oh, sorry. My name is Bill George. I live on Mudgewood Lane. On the first page, it says that, second whereas, whereas both the county of Knox and the town of Alleshead have an interest in reducing noise. And the fact that it's the first item listed, one would think that it's the highest priority is reducing or controlling noise. I am perplexed why the document only addresses nine of 24 hours a day of noise and is silent on the rest of the day. And in page 3G, and I don't pretend to understand what reasonable, non-arbitrary, and nondiscriminatory regulation of noise means, but that only applies for 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., when we're all presumably asleep. What about when we're all awake on our patios? Where are the limitations and controls over that noise? And I'd like to just leave that as have we... And I like everybody else, but I think we should not cede that. We should put some controls in place, or at least some recommendations. Otherwise, the way it's written, we've given them full control over noise. And I'm not, I don't think that's what the town wants. At least that's not what I want personally. So I'll leave that.
Debate or deliberate right now, but thank you.
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is ask the Select Board to take the document that you have that's been presented this evening and review it to the degree that you can. And don't just skim read and go through it a number of times and try to identify any questions that you might have and get a clear understanding of the intent of it. And if we could just check our calendars. And I think what I'd like to do is put this on the agenda for further review on the meeting scheduled for the 21st of March, which will be the second meeting in March, so that the Board of Select, the Select Board, can come together and try to come up with a decision on what to do with the document. That is, whether or not we want to present it to our legal department, send it on to the county to ask for their opinion on it or how we want to move forward. At this particular point, considering the amount of money the town spent on the most recent proposal prior to this one that was voted down at the town meeting, I'm not interested in, and I'm only one voice, but I'm not interested in the town spending any significant amount of money to pursue this if, in fact, it doesn't have enough merit for both parties. I appreciate and agree with Ken that we should have the opportunity to discuss it and try to do some back and forth. And assuming that doesn't cost the town a lot of money, there isn't anything wrong with that. I'll ask the committee, excuse me, I'll ask Ken, the Chair of OHAC, what your hope was in terms of when this, if it does come before the state town meeting, when you'd like to see that happen? Is our annual August date appropriate for that? Or is it your intent that it would happen sooner in terms of a vote?
Well, that's a very good question. I think I'd like to talk to the whole committee about that. In fact, if Lauren mentioned, that isn't the answer. As we all went at the AIPAC meeting that was issued into the other day. And I think we can let you know. I mean, it's a process. We understand that. You know, there's lots of things we hear around about, especially town meeting, fireworks coming up. If that was going to happen, you know, that that would be one thing. But please, in your fact, you know that.
Okay. Thank you. Lauren?
I was just going to encourage you that if possible, if this could be reviewed in the meeting in two weeks rather than four weeks, time really is important here. There are important things afoot.
I think we're going to keep it on the second meeting in March, as I stated earlier.
I agree. So? There've been several references to things going on, things that happened at a meeting, AIPAC meeting and so forth. It'd be nice to know what you're talking about.
Well, what I'm talking about...
Ken, just so you can pick it all up.
Maybe if you ever want to elaborate on it. We know that the eight and their 23 handers are very much on the table. There's discussion about a couple of more handers. And there's discussion about purchasing the recommendations from AIPAC to the commissioners. I don't know what the commission's, I don't know if that's an idea. It's to buy the property on Brenner Road, Brenner Lane, that's owned by the Transportation Museum. So, and part of that is outside of offense, which was always covered by the other. The interloper agreement, in fact, our former commissioner who represents actually had their concerns about that. So there's just a lot of stuff going on. And I agree, say, as a further, the county, the more, the more that the town can be piled what's going on out there and, you know, if there's none in the town's interest, you're a deadlock to the people of the town.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I'm just kind of wondering about the time frame. So we're going to go over it a month from now, I'd say. And then we pass it on to the county at that point? Or, you know, if we've mapped it out and does it go back to AIPAC? And they say, yeah, no, we don't like this. We're taking it out. And then it goes to the county. I mean, how many times are we going to go back and forth before it goes to the county for them to say, nope, we don't like this? Then it comes back and it goes back to them? It's not going to happen in a month.
It's a fair question. And I think what my intent would be for the meeting of the 21st of March would be that the Select Board would discuss the content, identify any questions or challenges that we may have with any of the language, and then make a decision, perhaps at that meeting, that it's time to send it to the county and/or send it to our attorney. Does that...
Yeah. No, I'm just wondering how many times it's going to go, you know, back and forth.
Well...
Who knows, right? At this point.
There are people that would deny this, but it went back and forth. How long did it go back and forth before it got to the point where it went to town meeting and was voted down? So a number of incarnations. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Lauren Swartzbopp, North Shore Drive, also a member of OHAC. To Mr. Page's question earlier, if we had to speculate what parts the county wouldn't agree with in this agreement, referencing the prior draft presented by the county and endorsed by the Select Board, it diluted, if not removed, town protections by essentially overriding required process for land use zoning permissions and ordinances. So I'd say that any and all areas that make those protections in Alleshead possible probably has a potential for them to be not agreement with. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else regarding this issue? Seeing none, thank you again for the presentation. We'll take a look at it and convene again on the 21st of March to have some discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Next item on the agenda is adjustments to the agenda. Decide on a spring cleanup date with free stump dump. Please explain. Oh, excuse me.
Jim Devery, 15 Woodland Road. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission. As you know, we do an annual cleanup in the springtime, and the Commission has been trying to run that the last couple of years. Historically, there has been a free stump dump day. I don't know if that's something that's always been true or not. But in any event, we are starting to plan our cleanup. And we want to make sure that the date that we pick would not coincide with the free day, because we feel it'd be harder to get volunteers from the community to help out and so forth. Last year, we were, it was just the Commission that did the work. So we are hoping to get, you know, more participation from the public. And currently, we are looking at, Earth Day is the 22nd, Friday, the 22nd of April. And we were figuring on doing things on the 23rd. School vacation runs from Saturday, the 16th to the 24th of April. Just as reference points, so...
So you're asking or recommending that the day that we open up the stump dump...
Not be the 23rd. Yes.
Not be the 23rd.
Not be the 23rd, yes.
Do you have a recommendation for a date?
We do, the Commission does not, no.
Well, I think we'd like to have one from you rather than us deciding when you should do it.
Well, then I would like it the week before, which would be, you know...
The 16th?
Yeah, I guess it would be the 16th.
Saturday, the 16th?
Saturday, the 16th.
And so you're requesting through the Conservation Commission that the 16th of, Saturday, the 16th of April would be the day that we would open the stump dump?
Correct.
I'm a little confused as to why you don't want to be the 23rd. The logic I'm failing...
Well, the logic is we are hoping to engage the community to get more volunteers. And if people have things that they want to get rid of on the, for free, they would be hard-pressed because they're spending the day, you know, picking trash with us. So we were hoping that it would not be on the same date. That was the thing.
I guess the thought always was that to do it on the day that it's free, because then more people would be, have stuff brought to the stump dump.
Well, I think the people that bring stuff to the stump dump are bringing their own stuff. You know, I mean, that's been my belief. I mean...
I mean, most, in years past, we did, the Grange did it 30 years ago. Probably everybody got too old.
It's not 30 years.
Some of them got too old to do it. But most of the stuff on the roadside cleanup goes to the land, goes to the...
Goes to town, doesn't it?
So I don't really see the, you know, the conflict. Plus, it's always been first day is when we've done it, just because that was part of, you know, tradition or whatever. But I don't think it matters. I don't think people care which day they can go to the dump free. So I don't think there's any problem with having it on the 16th. But, you know, whatever.
I know last year, we didn't have any community participation. It was all the Commission members. The previous year, we actually had quite a few people help out. You know, I don't know that that was, you know, because of this or not. I couldn't say. I mean, COVID is a bigger thing than, you know...
Right.
The stump dump, obviously.
As it relates to roadside trash that would be collected...
Right.
Has your organization made any arrangements with the transfer station?
Last year, I believe, you know, I brought a truckload of stuff there. And I, you know, I have the sticker on the truck. So, you know, there was no extra cost. You know, I think a couple of the other members did. And there were actually a couple of people who stopped because I was doing Dublin Road. And I gave them bags and they took them. They were going there, so, you know...
The only thing is we have to let the stump dump know because they need an extra vehicle there for that day. So we have to let them know which day it's going to be so they can contact the poller and have them bring extra vehicles on our path.
Thank you.
Only is, I've been involved with this cleanup, not recently.
Take your mask off. I can identify yourself, please.
Richard Caban, North Shore Drive. Over the years, I've been heavily involved with this. And one of the things that happens when you go to the transfer station with these bags, these bags are clear. They're supposed to be clear. And that way, you distinguish between somebody just bringing trash in and dumping it, and it's supposed to be from roadside cleanup. So that helps out over there in solving that issue. And I think there's kind of a little bit merit to having it on a different day in this regard. The people that might be engaged in cleanup are also somebody who's cleaning up their own property. If you're doing both the same day, you might not be able to do both things. So...
The whole idea is to get the manpower up there, right?
That's right. That's right. You know. So anyways...
So you'd be in support of a different thing?
Yes, I would.
Any other questions?
At one point, we tried to get the school involved.
Well, they did one year. I think they did the school.
We did try. And, you know, we're trying to get a little bit ahead of things this year by approaching, you know, the Select Board now so that we still have March to do some outreach and so forth. So it gives us, you know, almost two months.
All right. So I'll entertain a motion to open the stump dump for free on the 16th of April to satisfy the Conservation Commission's efforts.
Are you making a motion?
No, that's the motion I'm asking somebody to make.
So...
Second?
Any discussion?
No. On the left, the stump, yes. The stump dump now.
Share votes, yes. So the 16th of April, the stump dump will be free to anybody that...
Can I just make a recommendation that I know last year, we had the bucket sitting outside with the trash bags and things in it. I just don't think there was a lot of notice. Or, and I was hoping that maybe this year...
That's why we're trying to get... One of our notes from last year was that we needed to get started earlier, which is why we're coming here now.
Thank you very much. Excuse me. Next item on the agenda, there's no other business. Shelly in Illinois. Next item on the agenda is the approval and the signing of municipal warrants.
Come on. Dieting, right?
Seventy-five pounds.
Really?
Good for you.
You're an inspiration.
Yeah, you're great.
Thanks for coming to mine.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thanks for coming, Joe.
21st or something, you should get some of them, put some pounding on what they think about this.
Well, they have, if they see this.
They'll have to find out.
They have now, I think. They just got coffee tonight. I mean, it just gets so dragged out a little bit.
Right. Oh, yeah. They should weigh in on this. They were a step if they weigh in before we really discuss it. They weigh in with some, you know, recommendations across out so they had additions inside. And, you know, otherwise, it would be more bad for our one.
I'm going to request that we don't discuss this any further now because we're just not, we're not, we're off that...
Right, right. Well, yeah, but I mean, this is just procedure. This is discussing, but... We live in a band, right?
Can I give you a motion to the club? We did the club. When do we expect Scott to be back in the office?
Thursday.
Today's the 22th. Two, 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 two.
It's the same day. All the dates through February are the same. If you start with a two, two year, go backwards. Yeah. It might happen out like coming in.
Either that, or if you need legal assistance, you call the Tunes.
Right, right. Call the Tunes. They work for you.
The, I'm not finding the stuff here, but the E.L. Spirit, Inc., Protection Fire Department, I thought that stuff was supposed to be paid by the credit card.
Well, I think we have an account there. I think we have an account there.
Was it a purchase for reimbursement, or is it an invoice, Tom?
That's what I was trying to find.
Do you have an account for them? Should be an invoice.
Make sure that Scott sees that message, and he gets in touch with me on that. He is?
Everyone else seems happy to open it.
Well, that's even better. We have a ton of...
Cleaner.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, someone wants to make the motion.
What? Oh, I'm making a motion that we approve the warrants and consent it.
I'll search them.
The motion in a second to approve and sign the municipal warrants as presented. Is there any discussion? Tom, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Tom?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to re-adjourn this meeting.
All those in favor, vote with your feet.
Right. Go away.
We're going to shut down. Bye, everybody.
Bye. Anybody listening? Oh, you weren't Zooming, you were just YouTubeing.